Good evening and welcome to the January 27, 2020 Planning Board Meeting, the first of the year on camera. If we could first stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Nancy. See, we were gonna move the minutes before everything else.
I know, that's why I rushed to get here.
He made it. So as it is a new year, I want to wish everybody a happy new year and our new supervisor, Matt Slater, the best of luck in his upcoming term and the incumbents as well. First, we have correspondence. We got some new stuff. Late breaking. Questions about correspondence?
Yeah, we're gonna do a memo on the first one. On the Hilltop Panover.
We can show you the plan at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And then on the the email from Mr. Speck.
Oh, yeah.
That you've seen as part of the Silverman subdivision. And there was a portion of that subdivision that was to be dedicated for roadway and you guys wanted to keep it that way, as did the highway superintendent. So this is now the fellow that wishes to buy that piece. So I just thought I would speak to you about it. I believe that the answer will probably be the same, that you want to keep it that way, but if you want to entertain anything from him, just let me know.
I don't think anything's changed.
You want me to write him a letter that you're leaving?
Yeah, status quo. How are you?
Good evening. I'm Jim Gladore. I'm here for Adam Rodriguez tonight, who's got the flu.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
So I knocked out and got this somewhere.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope he feels better. All right, and we had some late-breaking stuff, we saw that. Any other thoughts?
I guess we're gonna be talking about that a lot on Gregory at some point.
Yes.
That 387 Granite Springs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's on.
So move on to the meeting minutes of January 13, 2020. Sorry Nancy.
On the first item, I did have a couple of comments, just for clarification for the record. On the second page, in that first paragraph or the continuation of the paragraph from the prior page, second sentence starts with pieces of this additional parcel. I think portions of the parcel would be clearer, just so people don't think that we're cutting it up or it hasn't been cut up in the past. Of this additional parcel or in the wetlands and which would be perfect, looks like a word is missing, which would be perfect for mitigation for buffer encroachment. I'm not sure you need the word "the" in the second to the last sentence, defense will have a mesh screen to catch litter. They're not gonna be littering the site, but any litter that blows onto the site would be great to get rid of. And in the second application, the CBS Crampon Road, we, in the minutes, it says generically maple trees, John. Do you remember the species? Because I think you referred to using a different species, but it may have been maple also.
I think we were talking about, I think it was a red maple.
Right.
Yeah, and I was talking about any other species that wouldn't have, you know, reach the heights and widths that those do.
I think we should call out that specific species that they were talking about, because if they change it to another maple species, that might come up as complication later. And then in the next paragraph, this starts Mr. Teggeter. Further on in the paragraph, there's a sentence toward the end, Dr. Greeley responded that the sidewalk is within the existing right-of-way and will be five feet wide, rather than a five-foot sidewalk. We don't want to think it was shortened. The Mr. Bach started, well, he didn't start the paragraph, but you started the paragraph with Mr. Bach at the bottom of the page. And the second, the third sentence said, "He said that it is a work in progress and will eventually be different." I don't, you know, we don't want to make it sound like they're just gonna swap it out for something else, I think. They're working on it. Second to the last paragraph, second to the last sentence, Mr. Peveraro responded that the rooftop units will be five feet off the roof line. It was noted that there will be some visibility traveling down the hill due to the slope. Mr. Teggeter asked about the building facade and the possibility of adding windows or banding. I think it's clearer. You said possibly. I think we should call out on the Crampon Road for the Taco Bell. First paragraph, going down towards the end of that paragraph, they were proposing a right-turn exit-only curb cut out. We don't want it to be anything other than that in the record. And that is what they proposed. And then the last sentence should say, "The proposed plan will improve the area greatly." The site is what the site is, I would imagine. And then I didn't really understand the first sentence in the next paragraph. Mr. Demont stated that the wetlands have been flagged. And Okay, I'm not sure. I remember that that wetland had the two separate
That's, yeah.
ponds, retention ponds.
There's two things that make up the wetland, the stream and the bio.
Okay? Okay?
God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, there's been flagged and then okay, the wetland is a function of really results from two things. I don't, if that's clear to everybody else, I might just be tired.
Systems.
Mm-hmm. The stormwater practice has become overgrown. If we could put that word in there, that would be great. And a comma after Evans Associates. And you have the sentence beginning with no land disturbances proposed with the delineated wetland. I think you meant within, it probably cut it off on you. Within the delineated wetland area. Following paragraph, the last sentence, Mr. Kincard asked Mr. Demont if they would consider a manhole for maintenance once they determine the condition of the culver. And then Mr. Kincard again in the last paragraph, first sentence, asked about fire protection if the location of the fire hydrant on Old Crampon Road was identified. Because I think we're running into the same situation with that, right? The only fire hydrant is on the north side of 202 and all the other stuff that we discussed. So if it's identified, and I think actually it's gonna work for them better than the other The only other thing that I think is a clarification, I'll give everything else to Nancy, is the last sentence. In the following application, 650 Pinesbridge Road, third paragraph, last sentence, Kincard stated that the island would be a, the island between the roadways. Just so we are clear about that, that's that Pinesbridge Road has that little triangle and it was the island between the roadways would be a good spot for that fire underground water storage tank. That's it for that. The last application, excuse me, it's not the last one, 2241 Sawmill River Road, in that first paragraph, third sentence. Not sure. The property is off of Main Street with frontage on Gady Place. It's off of Sawmill River Road. The property is we could just say, property fronts on Gady Place, which is not a public road? That's correct at this time, right?
Right. Private road.
Eventually, it might be taken over. He noted that a variance was granted on the property-owned town road. Not sure, I think we need to be a little clearer there. Privately-owned town road? Was granted on the private? The whole, the whole shakeout is, of course, they got a variance because they don't have frontage on a public roadway. So we can combine those sentences any way you want to reflect that situation, but I think that's what.
Gady Place is private road.
Correct.
I would just leave it at that.
Fine. Anything to clarify?
Yeah.
Just so as part of the record. Thank you again for all your
Yeah, very, I mean, lengthy.
It is. It's a long agenda with a lot of stuff.
Very tough to keep up.
You can have this, I don't
Anything else?
No, that's it from me.
Counselor?
Nothing.
John?
We're fine, thanks.
Anybody else on the board?
All good.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move into the regular session portion of the meeting. First up is the Fusco Minor Subdivision. They are looking for a second 90-day time extension. Location's 3477 Stony Street.
Good evening.
How are you, Dan? How are you?
NCRCA, NRC Engineering, representing the applicant, Laura G. Giovanni. We're before you, just, this would be our second 90-day extension. So we would just ask that the board provide us that additional time.
Are there any issues or?
We have none.
Counselor? Anybody from the audience? Anybody from the board?
Nope.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next is the Fury Minor Subdivision. They are also looking for a second 90-day time extension. Location, 2797 Carr Court.
Good evening, Josephina, Principal Site Design Consultants. We're asking for a 90-day extension. Currently, we are going back and forth addressing health department comments and we're hopefully wrapping that up soon.
All right, getting straightforward. Counselor?
No objection.
John?
We have no issues.
Anybody from the audience? Members of the board?
All good.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm gonna abstain, Nancy, on that one.
Okay. Okay, number five, the Gennelli Minor Subdivision. They're looking for their first 90-day time extension. Location's 777 Quinlan Street. Oh.
So on this, on this application, we've, we have all our approvals in place, however, the, the assessor's office asks us to make some revisions to the plat, so we're in the middle of doing that. And, and then we should be all set to go back to the health department, get it re-signed and come back for a final approval and final signature.
Okay. Counselor?
No objection.
John?
We have no issues.
Anybody from the audience? Members of the board?
We have a little bit of time anyway, but you're just giving yourself a cushion?
Yes.
This is good till March 13. Yeah, I have no problem.
Tom is on it.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries. I was asked prior to the meeting, interesting question, if some of these 90 or these time extensions could be done what's called pro forma, where it's kind of done beforehand so that people aren't asked to come in and obviously we just whip through three of them quickly. Is there any legality to that or if we know, you know, if like the work done prior to them coming, they don't, so they don't have to show up and we could do a meeting without them here? Is that, I can't imagine this.
The practice has been that the applicant is always attending if there are any questions or
From the audience.
Well, from the audience, but in particular from your board or, or any of the staff that you have, so.
Okay.
That's been the practice.
Okay. Thank you.
And in fact, there's been oftentimes, if there is nobody that attends, that you put it over until they actually do attend.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, number six, the IBM Halipad Special Use Permit. How are you?
Hey, I'm Don DeBose from IBM. Welcome. Thank you. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Time is passing by, huh? Right? I know. So we did have a, a limit on the number of trips or not on this one? In the original approving resolution?
In the original, you may have had a limit and you, you had a constricted timeframe to see how things would go. And they, when they came back in for the reapproval, there was few flights. And I noticed in this documentation that there was only nine flights
Right.
this entire year, so.
Right.
There have been no complaints. But yeah, I think that originally you did limit it to see how things would go.
Right. And nobody's been complaining and
Nothing.
Fewer than one a month is certainly not
Do, do we have to still keep the limit on it?
Eighteen.
Can we lift the limit or give them a little?
I think the only limit I saw was a time limit. Time of operation, nothing in terms of quantity.
I just remember
On the, on the top of the third page, there's an 18 flights per year.
The most recent resolution, there was a limit of 18 flights per year.
And you're still The reason I'm asking is, do you anticipate anything that you would need an increase or?
We, we actually had gone to the
Eighteen.
town planner at one point and asked for an increase because we were afraid that we might pump up against it. There, there seems to be more use of it and we are actually, one of our executives is trying to limit the flights because of the limit that, that we have on it.
Okay.
So if, if there, if that limit were raised or we're done away with, we, we might be able to use a little bit more.
The reason I'm asking, I think, you know, at any point in time, they can come in and ask. So if you find that, you know, a certain project is requiring, you know, transportation via helicopter or whatever, whatever your needs are, if you approach nine again, which is halfway, I would make the suggestion that you do come into the board ahead of time and, and we can always, we can always entertain increasing it, right?
What do they got, 18 now?
18, and they only use nine, and I think that's the most you've had.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Are you, did you say that you were trying to limit them on your own, so you didn't get to the limit? Is that
Correct.
So you would like to have a little bit more?
We, we had asked for that in the past and were basically told as we approach it, we should
Okay.
come to, to ask for more if needed.
Especially with no complaints.
With no complaints.
Nothing.
Well, no complaints would, I think one year we had four, one we had five, now we have nine, nobody's complaining. If you, if they get to 18, you know, who knows?
Yeah, but they don't get to 18 because they don't want them, but they, probably necessary to be maybe
What do you think, have you discussed what you think would be ample?
We, we haven't, no. Just that we've been careful about who we allow to fly in.
Would the, would the board entertain increasing it to 24, you know, without, that's two flights a month. I mean, you know, I don't think that's excessive, I don't think
No.
And if we find that it's an issue?
Yeah.
We might want to do 24 trips for one year and come back or, or just we can do it by letter?
How was the 18 arrived at?
I'm sure it was a back and forth.
It was basically, we didn't want it, originally, there were, there were people that were concerned about it and they were concerned about noise and safety and everything else. So we went through the whole thing with, you know, fire safety, I mean, it, it ended up being a discussion and if it's, you know, so we just capped it at basically one and a half trips a month. I don't think two mu, trips a month is gonna
Twenty-four is, I thought 25, but
I mean, when you think about that, two trips a month, that's not
I, I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have an issue.
See any issues?
I don't see any.
I move to increase the the number of trips to 24 a year with, with no more than four trips a month.
Noted.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys want to discuss that, but I, I think we don't want to pile 12 trips into one month either or else we're gonna be number one, the neighbors will suffer some hardship and, and number two, you're gonna be in here very quickly.
I, I don't have the, the monthly numbers offhand, but we have had some, some months where we have probably had four because of executive visits coming in, so that, that may actually
Okay, 24 with six a month, because nobody's complaining if there's four a month.
I think that's probably a little bit more reasonable.
Do you need a second there?
Not a peep. You could second it.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Anybody from the audience? All right, so in front of us, we have a resolution approving the renewal of the special use permit for a hail stop at the IBM property with the changes as noted. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There you go.
Good luck. Thank you.
Don't fly in the car.
You could say, you could say how, how well you negotiated. There you go, touche. Very good.
Some people are quiet.
They did such a good job.
Yeah. All right, next on the agenda is an adjourned public hearing for the CVS at Crampon Road.
Is it very high?
We boiled it an hour ago.
Well, the old maple tree, the old maple tree application.
It's like, yeah, it's within 500. Here we go.
Yeah. 500 feet. Yeah, I just say, something, it was specific, I remember.
I don't think it's 500 feet.
We probably should have
Hi, Dan Peveraro?
Hello, Gary.
Ross?
Oh, yeah.
Development. So the last, since the last time that we met, we've made a couple of changes to the plans, most notably to the species of trees, changing them from October Glory Maples to Chablot Service Berries and Levalle Hawthorns, which are 20 to 25-foot tall little trees. Because of this, the change in size, we didn't decrease the number, but you will be able to see past them because they're smaller, they're wire-friendly. So that was the main change from the, the last plan. Additionally, per the planning department comments, we moved the stop bar on Old Crampon Road to match the existing or previously existing stop bar location closer to the intersection. We provided the SWIP binder. One item I would like to note is, we jumped the gun a little bit with signage. We thought that CVS had approved two monument signs. Unfortunately, after we submitted, they came back and they want one monument sign on Old Crampon and a pylon of 15-foot high on 202. A little bit different from what was submitted, I apologize for that error. Additionally, there was an item for discussion, a couple items for discussion here. There was a question throughout our conversations about the lot line adjustment and how that would be handled. On the submitted documents, I've provided two possibilities. The first is for the lot line to be adjusted easily a straight line here, so everything from this red line to the left would be on lot 25. The alternate to that would be adjusting lot 26 in addition, this little line here, so basically the change would be to have the whole CVS on lot 25 and then change, and then keep this being lot 26 or lot 23, or also changing lot 26 such that the driveway is just on lot 26. It's sort of a fielder's choice for the board, however, the board would like us to proceed with that.
Are you looking for direction? I, I'd like to make a comment because I think the conversation we had in anticipation of future development on the, the larger piece here, I think we wanted to have the driveway on the larger piece and encumber it with an easement in favor of CVS at the present time. Is that correct? I think that works better?
Yeah.
Because then we don't have to get involved with curb cuts later developing the larger piece, et cetera, so forth. So I'm in favor of
The first one.
Encumbering this, move the lot line to the left of the driveway.
That's the other picture, isn't it?
Into this red line right, right here.
So that this is on this lot.
Well, these, this is two lots.
Right, it's on this lot.
Right, it's actually on that lot, this lot.
And what about this?
So that was option two, in addition to this red line, putting another line over here such that lot 26 L's and takes the whole driveway just on one lot.
That's either or
Yeah.
For my opinion, in my opinion. I mean, your point's well taken about the, making sure that it is, at least in part, on the big lot.
Mm-hmm.
But they are owned in common, so.
Right. And the topography, I think on that, this very large lot is fairly steep as you come up the hill. I don't think anybody's gonna be trying to propose anything or widen it, but so you're saying just encumber this one lot with the driveway in favor of the CVS to build?
That's, that's 1.0 is the one we're gonna go with, right? Whatever that chart number, you know, whatever that drawing is. Okay.
Yes, EX 1.0, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so the resolution can clearly indicate that you anticipate that both of those lots to the east are going to be serviced by the driveway that they're creating concurrent to this application.
Right.
So that there's no, you know, surprises after the fact.
It's just a little, you know, it's gonna be a little more complicated on your part right now, obviously, because you're gonna have an easement in favor of this lot and this lot over this lot, and then in favor of this lot over this lot and this lot, so it's, you know, but it doesn't matter, you know, I think if they're both encumbered, then it probably works better for us at the present time. Good luck with all that easement.
I have, I have a question on the pylon sign. Would CVS be able to incorporate the two, two stores that you're gonna be blocking off, commercial establishment, Adrian and the Steakhouse on that sign, maybe give them a little bit of a
We got Best Plumbing there as well.
Well, Best Plumbing, you can see, you can see why. The Steakhouse in Adrian is one that's gonna be closed off.
Well, there are a couple of things to consider with that, first being that I believe that the town code precludes you from having a sign for somebody that's not on your lot. Secondly, just looking into the future, if and when the rest of this lot gets developed, if we're sort of allotting signage, square footage to somebody off the property, it's going to be the detriment of this property owner and that he'll get less signage. going to be the detriment of this property owner, in that he'll get less signage for his tenants. So we'd prefer not to do that.
How high, do, where is the signage on the Steakhouse, and how high is that?
It's on the upper, upper part of the building.
Right, is there any chance that the fifteen foot sign would be blocking the view of that?
Well, I think at the last meeting, we talked about the monument sign lowering it, yeah. I mean, I think we've been really consistent, if I'm not mistaken, with requiring that.
And Chase?
Kind of get away from these large...
Fifteen foot sign would be on 202.
Right.
Sort of behind, so it wouldn't block anyone's view, the smaller sign is up, the monument sign would be over here as well, or proposing, so it would be shorter, and that's obviously in front of the Steakhouse.
But you look at the Jefferson Valley Mall, all these new applications that come in, you know, we've tried to somewhat limit it, I don't know what it is at the mall there, the height.
The height of the pylon sign?
Yeah.
The monument sign, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, they have several different signs, they have a pylon sign now.
There's some inside.
That's very tall.
But the one...
The monument signs, I would think are probably about eight or nine feet tall, the ones up near the driveways?
They actually had to adjust one of them.
One of them, one of them's a little bit larger. The one on Hill, I think, is probably four to five feet tall, around there, smaller. But they have a host of different ones.
And the, the one pylon sign that they do have is...
Pretty tall.
That's the one facing...
See, if it's over in here, then I'm not really concerned about it. If it were over towards the intersection, I would have a problem.
Yeah.
You're proposing at the entrance?
Yes.
I, I really don't have a problem with it there, and I think it's not, you know, we're not down in that pedestrian intersection, et cetera. I, I think, you know, it is a state highway, and they want visibility, you know, people coming from the west will see it for quite a distance, and the people coming down the hill won't lock up their brakes, you know, they'll see it ahead of time as they're coming down the hill, so it won't just be, you know, a monument sign, they get there at the last minute and they try and get into the thing, you know, so I think in this particular case, it might make more sense to have it.
Okay.
Maybe put a balloon up and we'll take a look at it, you know? Seriously, if we're gonna do a site visit or something.
The rear entrance, what are you proposing there?
That's the monument sign.
That's the fif, which size?
The, the pylon sign over here is fifteen feet.
And the one behind?
And the monument is ten foot from grade, but it's mostly, the sign, actual sign part is only three-six.
Yeah, we may want to shrink that a little over there, but this I really don't have a problem, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I think it may end up being a lot safer.
I agree.
Is that a rendering of the sign that you have on that, on the right?
That's the monument sign.
It's a monument? Do you have something for the, of the pylon sign?
Fortunately, I don't think I have that.
I presume it's just a...
Right.
I'd be the same thing, when it's short.
Oh, you pulled it.
Well, it's not gonna be solid, I don't think.
Is it a pole?
It's too, like a Gulf Coast style. Unfortunately, it was on my previous rendering and I...
Right.
Thought that it was...
Yeah, but it, you know, there will be visibility through...
It's very similar to that sign, just...
I think you're right, though, given the speed of traffic on that road and everything, it's like fifteen feet something.
Especially with the downhill grade, I mean, there's a number of reasons, I think.
Okay. Could work better.
I might want this lowered a little bit as we go further along, but the one in the back, ten feet's a little...
So, I don't know how helpful this is.
There you go.
But it's pretty much the same sign, more or less.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the signs?
Not for me.
No.
One other item that came up in previous discussion was the view on the rooftop, coming down the hill. Put together this rendering here that takes into account approximate rate of 202, and the rooftop units here with the parapets, and as shown on this, you're about nine hundred feet away from the rooftop unit, when you can see it over the parapet, and that's through the wooded area here, so we tried to put together a rendering that would show it, but it's difficult to show what's behind existing trees, so this was the best way that we came up with representing that.
That's great.
Yeah.
I mean, that really is, that just answers a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Perfect.
We've seen some really interesting, well, the last few meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
With the architect, yeah, it's incredible what's out there.
A lot of technology.
Yeah.
And our landscape architect is here tonight to answer any questions, should you have any?
Yeah, do you want to talk about the ARB and, I guess, the back and forth? I know we had concerns, John had concerns about the trees, it sounds like you changed that.
Yeah, there was a discussion about...
Yes.
Use of the October Glory maples, they're not wire-friendly, so we've since reduced them to other trees that are wire-friendly.
Right.
We kept the spacing the same, twenty feet is not unusual, even for October Glory, it's not unusual spacing, gives you a good solid hedge, but these are small trees, you can still, if you're driving, your, your eye is at about three and a half feet, you can clearly see under these trees, and they never get up into the wires, they do slightly, but the trees don't get hacked the way large deciduous trees get hacked by the power company, they just have to trim these. So I think that accommodates the villagers, the town's desire to, to replicate what was on the other side of 202, so that you get an allay of trees on both sides. I think the other side is October Glory, that's why we chose it, but apparently there's not a wire over there. So, lacking the ability to grow large trees, we use the smaller ones, again, hoping to get that same look, that I think is what you want, an avenue.
How wide do they get? How wide do they get?
Oh, the canopy of a service berry, fifteen feet maybe? Trees might, they should, I mean, they're twenty feet apart.
They may barely touch.
They should touch eventually, it'd be a while. Trees don't grow that well on highways, so they don't grow the way they would in the forest, but they would eventually touch, and the intent, again, is to get a, an elevated hedge.
Well, I, I don't know if you need to actually have an elevated hedge. The idea is that you can see through them, so you, you don't block the view of some of the signage on the interior properties behind.
Yeah, you'd see that, you can see underneath it, and again, it was replication of what was on the other side, that was why we did the, the density that we did, that's what we found on the other side. I, I don't think this will block view, certainly from a car, it wouldn't, and it's never gonna be overwhelming because of the type of tree.
All right, the rest of the, the Baca comments, it looks like you worked through them?
Yeah, there were a number of landscape comments we did in the last one, I believe.
And then there was a, a comment about about screening the view of the CVS customers into the lot behind us, which will be accommodated by, there's a retaining wall over here just because of the existing grades, that retaining wall extends two and a half or three feet above the CVS grade, and then there's a small four-foot fence on top of that, so you won't be able to see back there.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the last comment was the mechanical units, which we, was your, also a comment from this board, we just went over.
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
That's it.
The, the letter from Tom in our department here, has all that been addressed?
Yes.
Was it there?
The comment letter from the twenty-first?
Yes, twenty-first.
Yep.
What are we missing?
I think we've covered everything that we have been discussing. I think it's just a matter of tweaking the resolution to where you want it to reflect those issues.
Okay, okay. So, hold it?
Yeah, we can work on it for next, next time.
Okay.
And you, you can either do it in the following meeting, or you can do it at the work session if you care to.
We can close the public hearing.
This is an adjourned hearing.
Yeah, we can close it, but on the other end, we'll work through the resolution, we'll come to the next meeting, you guys could take a look at it, and we could open up the work session and close it, end it. All right, so do I have a motion to close the public?
See if they have anything to say.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody from the audience? They've been very quiet tonight.
There we go.
Got one.
You got one, come on up. Just gotta state your name for the record, please.
My name is Joseph, okay? Wouldn't it make sense to switch CVS with the parking lot, like swap the sides of them? So that way you're not blocking the Steakhouse?
I think it would block the Steakhouse.
Probably be a lot worse.
This is the Steakhouse, so if you put it...
There's a view shed, do you have a view shed with you?
Oh, what's, what's that over there then?
Streetscape?
A car body, auto body shop.
Oh, okay, I thought that was, no, my fault, nevermind.
They've been working hard to keep the, with the whole issue with the landscaping and the trees, and you heard in the beginning a lot about the signage.
Yeah.
It was a, you know, and the first application that came in, it was actually another building over there.
Right.
That's been removed, so a lot of care was placed into being able to see, because we want those businesses, obviously, to do well.
Of course, all right.
Thank you.
You're getting good at this.
Anybody else?
Motion called?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. See you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
That's a very nice detail you had there.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Those little things.
Well, listen, you know, you just see that line.
Trust it.
Right, we gotta take their word for it, I guess.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Atlantic Appliance, this is a public informational hearing, locations 2010 Maple Hill Street. This is for a new building.
Before, before you proceed with the hearing, I have a disclosure to make, that I own the building next door.
Right.
Immediately to this, not the post office side, but the other, I wish I did, but I, the other building, and I, I intend to participate, I think I can be fair and open and objective about this, and I actually want to see a successful business there, so.
Great.
Just putting that on the record.
Thank you.
Does Joe have your laptop?
What's that?
Your odd.
Good evening, Joseph Reno, the Principal Site Design Consultants, this evening we're representing Mr. Joey Vukaj, he's the applicant and the owner of Atlantic Appliance. Also with me this evening is Steve Marino from Timmiller Associates, our environmental consultant. Mr. Vukaj is the, looking to purchase, or is in contract to purchase, two parcels of land. The one parcel, which is this front parcel here, it's zone C2, it's 1.6 acres, and it's located on Maple Hill Street, right adjoining, adjoining the post office, which is right here, this is the back of the triangle, center right here, and he's also purchasing a second parcel, which is 3.13 acres, that's this parcel here, and it's on the corner of Veterans and Greenwood Street. Currently, both the parcels are vacant, and that parcel, the Greenwood Street parcel's zone C4. Mr. Vukaj is proposing to construct on the Maple Hill Street site, a commercial building, it's gonna have a footprint of ninety-seven hundred square feet. On the main level is going to be a retail operation where he's going to sell his appliances out of, let me just switch to that. He's going to sell his appliances out of. The lower level of the building will be warehouse space, approximately equal size, and then he's gonna have a mezzanine level on a second floor, which is going to be a little over 6,000 square feet of office space. Main entrance to the site is the, is the southerly entrance, which is right here, that's gonna be a two-way entrance. As you can see, there's parking in the front of the building, we have handicap parking as well as patron parking in this area here. Also, parking along this edge, and this edge here for patrons or staff, or employees that are working in the warehouse area. So the, as you can see, we've got a large green space here, and a large green space here, which is land bank parking. Mr. Vukaj doesn't feel that he needs the full parking count that's specified by the code, so as a temporary measure, or possibly a permanent measure, if, if, if there is no need, that is going to be land bank landscaped areas. Along the front of the site, along this edge here, and as you make your way over to this corner of the front parking spaces here, is, is a retaining wall, which is at the maximum height six feet, that wall's gonna wrap around and curve in this location here. How do I zoom in on this? This one right here?
By the hand, go to the plus line.
Okay.
Let me just do this.
You can do, you...
I can touch it?
Okay.
Screen. Hello.
Don't touch it that hard.
That's a little better. Okay. So that, as you can see, that, that whole front area along Maple Hill Street is, is all gonna be a landscaped area, we're gonna be installing a sidewalk, one does not exist there currently, and we're gonna take that up to our property lot, our northerly property, property line, and it's gonna extend to the south, to the property line of the adjacent property.
Joe, those parking spots, those are head-in parking spots, right?
They're all head-in parking spots, correct. Truck deliveries, which occur daily, you should get one, one or two tractor-trailer deliveries, usually between 9:30 and 10:00. For the most part, ninety percent of the time, it's just one truck. That's, that's coming in at this location here, that's gonna be the service drive for the deliveries, they're gonna come in, and they're gonna back into this loading dock, which is right here. The, along the back here, we have parking for delivery trucks and vans and service vehicles, those will be leaving, those will be loaded and leaving the site early in the morning, they'll be gone by the time the delivery trucks get there, and they'll be off, on their way for the day, so they load up for the day and they're, and they're done. In this corner here is gonna be our trash receptacle, and in this corner here, we're gonna have a compactor for cardboard, they generate a lot of cardboard, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have a compact, twenty-yard compactor just to deal with that. As far as the staffing goes, there'll be one person in the warehouse typically, there'll be five salespeople, and then there's seven support or back office staff, managerial staff. Get rid of this thing here. There we go, okay. For our stormwater control, at the, at the rear of the parking area, we're gonna be constructing a pocket wetland. Majority of the stormwater from the site is gonna go right into that, where it's gonna get treated. We're gonna design that so that it is oversized, so we're gonna increase the capacity that we would normally... We're gonna design that so that it is oversized, so we're gonna increase the capacity that we would normally be required for the 100-year storm by 110 to 120%. It varies for each storm because of, um, the parameters, but it's gonna be in that range, 110 to 120%. So that's gonna be a, a plus as far as, uh, flood control, uh, towards, uh, the back of the property, off to the brook that's on the adjoining site, which he, which he will also own. As you can see, we've got a wetland delineation right here on that adjoining property, which Steve will, will get into more detail about. In addition to that, we're gonna have other green infrastructure practices that are going to be, meet the DEP's requirements and the DEC requirements. So we're gonna require a permit from both DEP and DEC owners. Uh, the site will have public water and public sewer. All the utilities are located in the front of the site. At this point, I'm gonna ask Steve to come up and, uh, take you through the.
Good evening, Steve Marino, Timmiller Associates. And I'm gonna do my, my glasses trick as I go back and forth from one into the other here. Okay. As you know, when I, um, start these projects, typically I will go back to see what the history of the site looks like and see how, um, the property and the area has developed over the years. As Joe showed you on the site plan, there is a wetland at the rear of the property. Turns out, it's just off the back property line. Uh, when I delineated that parcel, actually, I didn't know that the second parcel was also part and parcel of it. So, uh, that hasn't, that, that's only recently been delineated, so that's not showing up as surveyed yet on the plans. Uh, but what you can see from this, this is the 1947 aerial that's available through Westchester County. Find that. This parcel, a portion, this area right here is, is the developed, the, the area that's proposed to be developed right around in this, this part of it is the post office currently. This is that, uh, professional building next door on, on the corner of Veterans. And then the parcel we're looking at is the one right here. So you can see that is, in the 40s at least, uh, this parcel was, was agriculture in nature, um, was cleared. Uh, this back piece here, this is where the Halex Mill Brook is flowing through, and that's remained undeveloped since, since at least the 40s. Junior Lake is right here at the bottom of the screen. You can see there's the outlet for Junior Lake. And where the stream goes now under Veterans, under the old train tracks there, under what is now Veterans Road and then through the property. So that property has not been developed, hasn't changed, uh, since the 40s. Oops, that's not right. I gotta, wanna drag it up. Maybe cursor down. There we go. Hey, this is the property in the 70s. Um, now the triangle is there. The adjacent professional building is there. The post office obviously isn't there yet. Uh, at that time, Veterans Road had just been built. There's a, uh, some kind of a traveled way traversing the site, the back end of, of our proposed site. Between that site and the, uh, the brook parcel to the rear. And, so there was a road through there back in the 70s. And now, here's what it looks like now. Okay, so you can see, post office is in right up there. The professional building is here. Uh, Hartel's is right there. Not doing that. And this is the, the brook property. And you can see where the brook flows through the site from Junior Lake underneath, uh, Veterans and, and through the property. So, ser- uh, obviously, you can see by looking at the history again, that back parcel has historically been the brook. It's historically been flood, flood plain. The parcel where we're proposing the new building is, now has reverted back to woods again, uh, but was used as agriculture, for agricultural purposes in the past, and we didn't find any wetlands on that property proper. The wetland is just off-site to the, uh, to the east. Okay, change your glasses. Which one is? Oh, that's the photos. Okay, let's do this one first. I gotta get bifocals, I really do. Okay. So this is the site, the site to be developed. Let me blow that up a little bit. Laser pointer would be so much easier. Okay. Uh, there's a site to be developed, uh, and Joe's detention basin at the rear of the property. What we've started doing now, that's all wetland buffer. The wetland buffer extends just to the edge of the developed, proposed developed area. The developed, the proposed parking lot and those last parking spaces for delivery vans, et cetera, are actually outside of the buffer. So the detention basin only would be located inside the buffer. So we're proposing a post and rail fence right along that edge of that parking there to differentiate between the developed area of the site and then what will ultimately be undeveloped area at the rear of the site. So the basin will be constructed, um, and you can see here, we started looking at some concepts for landscaping of that parcel. There's a number of trees and shrubs that we'll propose to put in, in the buffer there and around the proposed basin, as well as plantings inside the basin once we get more detail. And we'll also have some input from the conservation board as we move forward. So now we, so obviously, we know we're disturbing, uh, wetland buffer there, although it's for stormwater treatment and some additional landscaping. So we are proposing some additional mitigation off-site, kinda offset those disturbances and kind of, um, do a little restoration renovation work for the wetlands and floodplain off-site. What I've done since our last meeting is I did go out and delineate, uh, the wetland on that adjacent parcel. Veterans is right here. This is the, uh, right there, you see the hand moving around. That's where the brook comes underneath Veterans and onto the property. And there is a wetland pocket just to the west of that area. We did flag that. We've picked that up with GPS for the time being. We will be surveying that as that new property gets surveyed and added to the, to the plans. So that is flagged, and, and, and you can see, so where the wetland on the, that was originally flagged, flagged where that line now comes down and, and picks up that circular area down there, uh, on the, to the south along Veterans. Let me just go to this last plan, this last. Okay. And this is what those areas that are, that are highlighted on that last, on that mitigation concept plan look like. This is, uh, just off the corner of Veterans and, uh, and Greenwood Street. Blow that up. There we go. Um, there is a wet pocket there, obviously. Um, and this fragmites growing is dominating through there. Uh, there are some trees in there, uh, small red maples and elms that have been drowned by the collecting of water in that area, 'cause they, they can't take too much water. So the frags are growing in there, and that's something we would propose to clean the fragmites out of that area, to take out some of the dead trees. We like to leave some dead trees for habitat. But we would clean that area out, remove the frags, and replant some wetland plants in there as part of a mitigation plan. Uh, here's some of the stuff you can see that's on that parcel right now that we would be cleaning out. There's your requisite shopping cart. Every good wetland needs to have one. This is, uh, a sofa. There's also some old, there's a, there's an old water heater out there. There's trash that's obviously, it's an easy spot to dump. Once you get, you get to Veterans, that corner, you park, you dump stuff in the wetland, you drive away. So obviously, we propose to clean all that out as well. Um, and then there's a second spot on Greenwood Street. And this is something we had talked about when we went through the application for the project across the road. This is the, uh, east side of Greenwood Street. And again, that's a wetland there. That shrub you see growing in the middle is winterberry. It's a, a winterberry holly. Uh, very nice wetland plant, very attractive. You can see everything else that's in there that might be a wetland plant has been overtaken with the fragmites. So we would again, go in there, propose to clear all that fragmites out. There's some honeysuckle in there and some other things that are non-native species that kinda tend to accumulate in disturbed wetland areas. So we would go in there and clean that out, and we have a plan to go in, clean out, and do a restoration on, in that area as well. I think there's one more picture of that spot. Kind of a close-up of it from there, so.
Fragmites forest.
Again, all fragmites. The fragmites forest, yeah. And for those of you not familiar with fragmites, it's the common reed grass. It grows anywhere where there's disturbance, where things have changed. So if somebody's changed the water level in there by changing the size of a pipe, or a pipe gets blocked, or someone's dumped dirt in there and, and at least left it alone, fragmites will be the first thing that'll go in there and grow. And it gets to six to eight feet tall. I've seen it 12 feet tall. And just kind of chokes out anything else that might be growing there. So we've done on a number of sites in this area, and as well as long, down to Long Island and up into the Catskills, we have a plan that we go in and remove the fragmites uh, over a period of a couple of years, and then we replant in there, keep the fragmites down, and the, and new, new native wetland plants grow up. And it, uh, it really does a nice job of restoring the wetland.
Steve, when you remove them, do you, do you spray, or do you remove them by the root?
We, we always try to remove them by hand first. And depending on how long a period we have to do it, is how, is how aggressive we are with it. If we have three or four years to do it, we'll take it out a little at a time. Kind of, 'cause once you, once, if you cut it back at the right time of year, it starts to grow again, uses up all that energy that's in the roots to try to grow back. But then the winter comes, we kinda time it so that the winter hits it before it gets to seed heads, before it can store too much energy, and little by little, it peters out. In some areas, especially, particularly areas that are exposed and very visible, we will often get, uh, get approval to do a, a spray. Not a spray. We don't actually spray chemical. What we do is we have a system where we use a wand, which is about two feet long, that's a sponge. And we can pump to the sponge, and then we go in and actually rub the leaves one at a time. So there's nothing being sprayed. You just walk through, through the frags, rubbing the stuff on the leaves while they're active, generally August, September. And by the fall, they've sucked all that stuff down into the roots, and that kills them. We don't, yeah, 'cause I've found that once you clear a lot of this stuff out, there's still stuff in, in the bottom that wants to grow. And once you cut it out, native plants start growing back. So we don't wanna spray the stuff, 'cause it's just gonna kill them too. So we go through, like I said, we go through with the wand and, uh, rub each individual leaf to take care of that. Now let me just get to, go back to that one plan again, one more time, right there. So, so, so at the bottom of the screen, you see that, that's the wetland where there's water pooling. Uh, and that'd be the first area we take out. And then the area to the top of the screen is the area along Greenwood Street where we would go in, do the same kind of treatment. It's not quite as thick up there. It's thicker at, uh, at the corner. But again, there's some nice wetland plants trying to grow in there. And if we can free them up, that'd be great. And then Joe mentioned flooding. Uh, again, as we heard when we were dealing with the property across Greenwood Street, flooding through that whole Halex Mill corridor is, is always a concern. There is 100-year floodplain, um, just barely touches the corner of our property as it, as it moves on, uh, to the north. Uh, what we're looking at also is the possibility of using that low area at the corner of Veterans and Greenwood Street. If we can get some of that water when it rises up in the brook, if we can get some of that water to back up into the wetland on Greenwood's, uh, at Veterans, uh, and provide a little bit of extra storage for the stormwater. So we would have to make a connection between that wetland and, and the, and the brook as it goes by. You can see where it does actually connect from a wetland standpoint. But topographically, there's a little, there's a foot or so of difference that the water has to get pretty high in order to be able to back up into there. So we would try to do some, get some points out there and see what we could do to make an adjustment to, so some more, additional water could back up into there that might help a little bit with flooding downstream. And that's where we are so far. It's still, it's still pretty conceptual, but, uh, we do have some notes on the plan now, and, you know, we're kinda starting to finalize some things to, to put a plan together for this. And that's what I have.
So at this point, we're working on our design documents, trying, trying to further all this information along. We've, we've done our testing for the stormwater out there, which has pointed us in the direction of the pocket wetland. There's a high, extremely high groundwater table throughout the site, so it's not conducive to infiltration. And this, this method is, you know, it's, it's a, uh, a good means for dealing with stormwater quality and, and the attenuation, so we're, you know, we're on the right track here. So, um, at this point, uh, the next time we'll come back to you, we'll be with some more detailed information, and we'll be looking to schedule the, a formal public hearing and move the process along so that we can, um, get a resolution in, in place and make our way to the DEP, uh, for their approval.
Thank you. Can I ask one question? How long's the business been in town?
Forty-five years, next month.
Forty-five years?
Yes.
How are you? Thank you. Come on. How's everything going? So 45 years, next month, it's been in town. Serving Yorktown.
We're an institution there, and, um, I don't wanna brag, but we're the highest performing appliance in the tri-state area.
No, you should brag.
We really take, uh, we really take it seriously. We try to, uh, if, every customer's very valuable to us. And we, we, we love Yorktown, and that's why we wanna, not only for me, for my kids here. I have, I have five daughters, three of them work at the store. So, and the other one, they'll be working there too, but they're, they're either in college or they're too young. So, um, this is a family business, and we wanna stay here forever. And this is very important to us, and we're, that's what we're willing to do. With, with, uh, with Joe, what he's doing is this should help, even with the other, uh, the stormwater, uh, what we're doing here is to help the excess flooding that they have there. I know it's been a long problem there, and this should, um, we've discussed this in, in length, and this should help, um, the neighbors also with the flooding, I think. And, um, it's not like, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I don't know what else to add, what he's added, but, um.
No, I think what you, the, the additional capacity for the basin and what you're doing in the parcel beyond it.
Right.
To help the stormwater and the people on Greenwood, 'cause we heard during the, the process for the other building on Greenwood, some of the issues. And, and that's fantastic that you're gonna be able to.
Well, we didn't, we, as, 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 uh, as for my store, I didn't need that back lot.
Right.
The only reason I'm purchasing the back, back lot is to make it easier to get this resolution passed, and to get this passed, and to deal with the stormwater. So, um, uh, it means a lot of money. So I'm hoping that you guys will work with us, and the town will work with us, and make this process go as easy as possible, so. It's in your hands. We, we're doing what we can.
No, you absolutely are.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Remember, appliances, that costs everybody.
Yeah, right. Maybe get a microphone.
Counselor's taking notes.
Just to go back to Rob's earlier question, because, you know, at first glance, when, when you pull in, show us, if I wanna pull in and go in and buy an appliance, I'm gonna come in on the southern end, right?
Correct.
Then I'm gonna make a left-hand turn probably to park in front of the store. That oblique turn seems a little cumbersome. Is there a way to? Is that just for aesthetics, or is there a grade change that you're accommodating, that those spots are not parallel to the front of the building?
The. Well, w- we're, we're doing it to, to best fit the, to maximize the number of spaces, of course.
Of course, you're gonna lose a couple if you bring it.
If, if we did do that. But also, that front, and, and I, and I failed to mention this, and I'll mention it now. Thank you, John, for bringing it up. So that, that open portion in, where the, where the sidewalk gets kinda wider in front of the building right there. This area in here, uh, part of our application, and we're gonna require special use, consideration to do outdoor displays of, you know, grills and whatnot in that area. So that's gonna be part of our application also. So that's part of the reason we widened that area, and it skews the parking to kind of accommodate that.
Is there plenty of room to make that turn?
Yeah, yes.
To park the cars?
Yeah, I mean, this, this, um, this entrance is wider than we would typically make it because we've got a 53-foot, uh, tractor trailer going through the site. So we need a lot of room for, for them to maneuver, so that they can turn either, uh, south or north, uh, Maple, Maple Hill Street. So that turning radius there is much larger than it needs to be on a typical, in a typical situation.
Anybody from the audience have any questions? Just gotta state your name for the record.
Jacob, seen Van Colton Circle. Great project. I have one concern, and Joe just brought it up. You're making the turnout with that tractor trailer. Veterans Road has got daycare center, it's got entrances to the park. You've got the entrance to the stage in the old sixth-grade school. My suggestion, that all tractor trailer movement be from the site, going back to 20235118, and then in from there as well, with no tractor trailers being allowed to go to Veterans Road. Making a right along Veterans Road, or making a left to go past Hartel's onto Greenwood Street.
My, my comment to that is that you, you go out onto 202 at the end of Maple Hill Street, you've got no signalized intersections over there. And that's sometimes a. And that's sometimes a tough turn to make. Maybe not, they're coming in the morning, that may not be so bad. But I know that it's difficult to make turns out of there in the afternoon, whereas you do have a signal at Veterans and Commerce Street coming out.
The issue that you have is, and if you've been looking at the number of pedestrians and bicyclists that have been struck, large vehicles, the real wheels don't follow the front wheels. They tend to move in. Again, you've got, Veterans is not a particularly wide road. You've got the daycare center on Veterans. You've got the Legion, you've got the VFW. They have events. You've got the running track or the walking track that a lot of seniors use. And then you've got the sixth-grade school. Putting more commercial traffic on that road, that road is not designed for it, nor is the intersection of Veterans and Commerce to make wide turns. You keep them on commercial routes, 202 is a commercial route. We also have to look at the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, daycare centers, people walking, people who have walkers, bicyclists, the kids that are going up in that area as well. We have the event there, especially during the summer, you've got soccer in there and the like. We're asking for a tragedy by allowing tractor trailers, especially the long ones on that road. Right now, between that site going up to 20235, you do have tractor trailers. You've got the loading dock from behind TJ Maxx and the like, and you've got the postal trucks. And it's commercial. You don't have the schools in the park and the like. And we have to be cognizant of the schools in the park that are along Veterans Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we ask, yeah, could we ask Mr. Vukai, how do your deliveries occur now? Because you are on that backstretch.
Yes, right now, our warehouse is in Buchanan. Before it was in 202, where Lowes was, you guys I'm sure are aware of that. Our trucks, we start them in the morning, they go, they go to the warehouse, they're small trucks. We have 16-foot, they're the smallest box trucks you can buy. And we have a couple of trucks in a van. And hopefully, we'll have another truck, we get busier, but right now, two trucks in a van and they're ample, they're fine for us. They leave. For the most part, we don't go through town, we go through the back because it's easier to go through the back than go right, or the lights through town. I mean, I can't guarantee that the, we're going to get, 90% of the time, we're going to get one tractor trailer a day.
At what time?
90% of every day, time, one a day, usually between 9:30 and 10:30. That's where they come. And they're going to take 684, that's how they get there. They take 35, of course, to 202 when they come there. So they're going to make that left on Maple, they're going to pull and go back. And they're probably going to make the right, go out and go 202 and go back towards 684. That's, I would imagine that's the simplest way for them, it's a logistical way. They wouldn't go through Peak Skill and through 9 because just, they can't, they can't take the bare mountain extension because it's a weight limit. So they, it would just be feasible for them to go stay on 35. So I would imagine, now, you know, I don't own the tractor trailer company, but I would imagine it's easiest for them when they get out, when they, when they enter, they're going to get, unload, and they're going to make that right on Maple and go right to 35. It's easier to make, you can't make a left, but you can make a right easy. They're going to make that right and head right to 684 and take it that south where they have to go. And that's the way 99.9% of the time is going to happen.
I think, you know, I think the point is well-taken, Mr. Kopstein's point, and I agree with you. I don't think the trucks are going to be looking to, you know, for stop and go, stop and go to get through busy intersections in town. But perhaps we could have the town board look into limiting tractor trailer traffic on that specifically Veterans Road leg. And you could tell your, you know, suppliers that that is what your preference is, moving out of the site to not have them make that left-hand.
It would make just common sense for them.
Exactly.
It's not, I don't even think I had, I would have to enforce it. They come that way. I mean, they, why?
Yeah, delivery trucks are not, that's not what Mr. Kopstein would prefer.
No, no, I understand, I understand. He's worried about the tractor trailer. And that's what I'm saying. I know where they come out of. They come out of Long Island, they take, they take 95 into 684. So that's, that's how we get our deliveries. I don't see them going through town, and I don't see them going through the, all the lights when they can just make the right and go to the stop sign and make the right and go back where they were. I mean, it's easier for them. I wouldn't have to, but if it means put a tractor trailer, no trucks make a left, I would abide by that also. I'd have no issue with that.
Good.
I would have no issue with that.
Thank you.
I could say, we must have a half a million miles of tractor trailers in Yorktown in the last years. And when do we have an accident? None, none that I know of. And I used to drive a tractor trailer. So when you say the wheels track out, no, if the driver's right, the wheels don't track out, track in.
It's also, if you want to be fair.
I don't see where the tractor trailer deliveries would be.
If we want to be fair, I mean, we have all the grocery stores that we have, from TJ Maxx to Act Me Too. They get deliveries all day and they have to come that way all day.
Tractor trailers all over the town and I haven't seen one time.
We get one tractor trailer a day.
Understood.
Monday to Friday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Any other comments outside of tractor trailer? No? From the board?
I have a comment. At one point, I think we talked earlier about changing the layout of the parking so that there isn't so much parking street-side on Maple Hill Street. One of my concerns is that, there are a number of businesses on that street and on Veterans where the parking is not right on the curb, but it's to the side. And you've got a lot of land bank spaces on that side. Is there a way that you could perhaps reconfigure this to minimize the parking along Maple Hill, put more greenery in there or some kind of a buffer, and then use the parking along the side, which would be parallel to what's already there?
We talked about that, but there is, that's where the retaining wall is highest, right?
Right, so.
Cars will be down below this.
Yeah, so at this, these five spots here, they're sitting up, they're sitting up three to six feet above the road. So visually, I don't think they have the same impact as this area here, where this area is going to be gradually graded up from the road. Okay. And that was the whole reason we land banked all of that.
That side? Okay, I mean, otherwise, I think it's great. I think, you know, we certainly want to work with you to get this in. It would be nice.
Joe, I do have one question, and it pertains more to the other project that's across the street on Greenwood. Does the water, is this a destination for that water from Greenwood?
No, this, this water goes directly into the Hallicks Mill. The 2040 Greenwood comes across under Greenwood Street and then to the Hallicks Mill.
And it's further down, right?
Well, it's not further down, it's, it's right.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at, would this, would your, particularly since you're doing it over capacity, could this be a destination for that water rather than going onto somebody's front yard or something like that?
Well, that was the idea of expanding that.
Right.
Portion on the southern end.
Right.
Not just that piece that's there and cleaning it up, but finding a way to use the storage area to the east, to the east of that yellow portion in the lower.
Right. So here, here's our site here, right?
Yep.
The Greenwood site is right over here. That pocket wetland is located right here. It comes across, see this? So there's a culvert that goes right under here, it comes across here and ties in upstream from where we're discharged. And then what our intention is, is to take advantage of this existing area where, where water currently pools that comes, kind of sheds off of Veterans and off the back of 2,000 people, and make that hydrologic connection to the stream in a way where the stream, when the stream gets elevated, it'll take some relief by backing up into that area and getting some storage out. So we'll be providing some, some storage within our basin by increasing the size of it above what we would typically do, and then get some additional storage there.
I mean, it's such a benefit to be able, since they bought the property, be able to go in there.
Yeah.
If it wasn't purchased, no one was going to touch it.
Right.
It would just stay, get worse, and seal it up. And now it's going to get cleaned up, you know? I'm a little curious about your intimate knowledge of the dumping in the area. But past that.
He forgot about the tire that's in there too.
You know, it really is, I mean, it's just, for all the people on that street that we heard about the septic being inundated with water.
Right, right.
Now, I think the more little projects that you could tie into like this.
This isn't the end-all, but I mean, we're certainly doing something in the positive.
It's definitely helps. Everything helps.
And I think we all appreciate that the, it's more, you know, although it's not a big region, it's more of a regional look at what's going on in the area and trying to, you know, with all the impacts, including traffic, but in this particular case, all of the wetland and stormwater impacts.
Think we could schedule a public hearing so you guys can move this along? I mean, you'd be ready.
I would love to do that.
Let's check with the boss. Is that possible?
Yeah, so schedule it for like next month or?
I mean, we're, we're pretty far along in our design documents. We can have them, we can't make Wednesday's submission to get on the work session, but if we're given a little bit of leeway, we can get that, that to you. But more importantly, we got to, we have to get to the conservation board.
What's that meaning?
Next week, yeah. And we're close, we're close to having an architect onboard. It's been taking a little bit of time getting an architect. And we, we could. Person third. I would suggest this, if you, if you're so inclined to do so, and schedules for the February, and we'll come to the work session, if, if we're not ready at the work session, then we'll put it off.
Right. That'd be great.
Well, for the, for the public hearing, you'll want to have some of the flood stories that you talked about as well, right?
Right.
We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll have that all worked out by then.
We'll have the details.
Yes, the lesson detail.
The first one in February is the 12th. Give you time.
Right, the submission date is.
Would be the one after that.
Oh, 24.
Yeah, submission date is Wednesday for the 12th and then, anyway.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody else? Do I have a motion to close the public information hearing?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Look forward to seeing you come back.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the anniversary.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Forty-five years.
We're excited.